I just want, I gotta take care of you.
Just say we thank you today, most of all, for the work you do on the cross. Each one of us have the opportunity to make a decision that's certain for the rest of our lives and then spend eternity with you and have... The second thing we praise you for today, especially in Scurry County, surrounding counties and in our state is the rain that you've sent. And it seems to be a good general rain, around three, three and a half inches. And we just thank you so much for that today. And we just pray that you continue to bless us with that going forward. Pray that you have all wisdom and understanding of how to do what's right with this Commissioners Court for the people of our community. And to continue to do so as we go forward. We pray that you would help us to think about those that serve our community, that do the things that makes this community work. And for the things that you have given us and blessed us with, that we're able to do these things because of the blessings that you brought into our lives. We thank for these things that Jesus...
Let me just say, I'm United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On a Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I'll say it one more time. There is nothing more chilling, that gives me chills more than the sound of that, the size of this group honoring our country and our state. Thank you. Okay, before we get started, we have a lot of folks in here and I appreciate every one of you coming. You're more than welcome to come anytime in the future. We'd love to have you. However, passions are high right now. We're talking about budget. Let's, let's do the best we can to keep those in check. Let's have a good discussion today. So with that, at this time, any person with business before the court, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the court. No formal action could be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Ms. Summers?
From complete data loss, just about the time two new commissioners were hanging on board, to software glitches that increased the tax rates that had just recently been stated. There are elected officials ignoring written travel policies and then ignoring the protocol by trying to give one employee a raise. From shorting road and bridge of at least $1 million of ad lorum taxes, might not have been illegal, but it was unethical. Now we have supposedly cut some things from the budget to find out they've been put back by the judge. We have an out of control judge that says we need to elect more Democrats to order, in order to lower taxes. If you vote for anything above the non-new revenue tax rate of 39, 35, then you are voting for more out of control and frivolous spending. I have been asked to mention that if the county continues to fund the golf course, we are asking if the county is going to give lifetime memberships to every member of the county, correct? And that's what I was asked to say at the last minute. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any non-agenda items to discuss? Yes, sir.
My name is Valen Bill. I chose to move here in January 2005. This is where I wanted to retire. I only worked for the Utes and the brother and retired from there. And I was able to get a transfer out here. It disturbs me to see what is happening to our county in references to the litter and stuff. Such as the small PVC pipelines that's used for running water and salt water that is abandoned, is laying on the side of county roads. It disturbs me to see the frac lines that's just laying out there that's not in use. And I have some questions, which I understand will not be answered here today, but this is a point of interest I'd like to get to people's attention. Is one, I know the state leases the right of way for money for these frac lines. That's what I've been told by the state when I talk with the state about it. I have asked my county commissioner about this. He says, oh no, we don't charge them, but we have to let them use it. So why are we allowing that revenue to get away from the county if that is the case? All right? Another point with that is, who polices these water lines? Because these people that run these water lines just do what they want to do and do not care about the landowners. They're pushing it up next to the fence. And I, as I talked to the judge the other day, when I asked, you put on the agenda for this, it was turned down for that. Which I don't understand why I was turned down, because this is for the veteran of Scurry County. When you put it up next to the fence, they drive up next to the fence, they're pushing dirt underneath the bottom wire and the bob wire. This is not going to last long with that. Nobody apparently is policing that. I've talked to my county commissioner about that also. Been talking with him, he says, oh, that's Mr. Robinson's. And I talked to him again, well, it's half mine. And I talked to him again, well, that's Mr. Robinson's, which I understand Mr. Robinson is deceased now. So I get conflicting statements from my county commissioner on that. The other fact of the matter is the tin horns that was trenched across 4131. And is there an agreement for that? If so, it didn't follow the agreement set down by the county where it's not supposed to be trenched. I also understand them two county horn, them two horns was bought by a private individual for private individuals' gain and the county put them in. I talked to my county commissioner about that. He says, well, I know you had to talk to Mr. Robinson. Of course, Mr. Robinson is deceased. But if that is indeed supposed to be his road, that I get told one time from him, and then another time he said it's only half his road, why does he not know any more information about that? All right? The other thing is, and thank you for the, for the, for the sign of the mark there, but the other issue of that is, the destruction that that does to the property across the street which I lease. The other thing about that is I was told by my county commissioner that it was put in for drainage issues. I don't believe that because we didn't have any drainage issues before that came in. The drainage issues over there that runs the water across the street is due to the equipment that's being put in that ditch. And it's filling up the ditch, so the water doesn't run down the creek anymore on the west side of the road. And it was put in for drainage. Why are we allowing 12, 14, 18 inch lines to be run through there? There's not one tin horn that was put in in 2018. I was told it was put in 25 or so years ago. It's not true. It's put in 2018. The other one was put in somewhere around the first of June. And if you go out there and look, it's got two water lines in it for private individuals' use over the county road. Is there an agreement on it? Is there not an agreement on it? And I'd like to get clarification of what precinct is 4131?
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeVill. Okay. Anybody else have a non-agenda item they would like to discuss? Yes, sir.
Regarding the income from the golf course, if we look at what the water crew does in Scurry County and visiting with the college and whatnot, that if it's defunded and closed down, they cannot handle the overflow of all the people. Plus, all the schools practicing there that use it for our countywide deals. Hermally's Golf Team, ours has a golf team. They all come play, practice at our local courses. And with those, with this being said, asking about lifetime membership, there's well over 100 paying members that have a monthly fee. Golf cart, sheds, the entire deal. And in the last five years, it's one of the only entities that has actually raised the amount of money that they've received every year as far as general income from the public. And we appreciate all of the tax money and all the, you've had numerous people and many countless man hours volunteered to fix up a, a 50-year infrastructure that needs to be replaced. And we were just asking for y'all to think about this and put it in your agenda.
Thank you. And we'll be able to get into that under the, the, when we discuss the tax rate and the budget and all of that later. Thank you. Anything else on a non-agenda item?
Well, I don't know if I'm, I'm kind of speaking on the same thing as other non-agenda or...
We'll be able to get into that and, and when we get into the budget.
So then I can talk?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. It's all right. It's all right. Thank you. It's not specifically on the agenda, so. Yes, sir.
Uh, Bartman?
That has to be specifically on the agenda for us to discuss that.
I understand. That's why I was bringing it up, so maybe you can get it on there for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. It's already been...
Neil Humphrey?
Okay. Any other non-agenda items to discuss? Okay. Court to discuss and consider any precinct projects scheduled and staffed.
We're playing roads without a water truck.
For the first time in six months?
We moved to...
Okay. All right. Court to recognize the Texas Historical Commission on its Distinguished Service Awards. Mr. Bullard, and we're going to let Mr. Bullard give us an update on what's going on, but we have three years' worth of Distinguished Service Awards, 2019, 20, and 21. And we have letters from, for each of those, and this is from the Texas Historical Commission. 2019, like I said, Distinguished Service, just Scurry County Historical Commission in recognition of its active and well-balanced preservation program. And I'll do an amazing job. Sure did appreciate you in keeping our history alive. So with that, I'll let you go ahead and give some information on it.
All right. Thank you for that. I could give a talk today about the theoretical reasons to preserve our history, about how a knowledge of history links us back to the roots of our community, gives us a grasp of what's been before, so we can better make decisions in the now, helps us understand change and how the society we live in came to be. But I'd rather give you an example of why just the joy of history may be the best reason of all. I was recently giving a museum tour to a class of fourth graders down in the basement of the Scurry County Museum. For thousands of artifacts relating to Scurry County were preserved. I was really worried if I could be able to hold the class's attention, but all I had were ancient objects from the past. While they had access through their phones to all the marvels of the modern world. Much to my surprise, my only worry was getting them to leave the basement when their tide was up. All their own. The kids pointed out many artifacts which I had forgotten were even down there, and they were constantly commenting and questioning. These were fourth graders. I had cautioned them that they shouldn't touch the objects, but as they were leaving the basement, one young student hung back, very quietly and politely asked if he could wear, for just a minute, a helmet from World War I, which we have several there, which he'd spotted on, high on a shelf. Turns out, he was obsessed with that period of history and knew all about how the soldiers looked and the events that had occurred. I reached up and put the helmet on his head, and the joy on his face as he commented how heavy it felt, made me realize that all the wonders of the virtual world still can't replace the delight of experiencing the real thing. Maybe that is the most important reason to preserve history. The Scurry County Historical Commission is proud to receive the Distinguished Service Awards, the judge said, from the Texas Historical Commission for preserving local history. Of the 254 counties in Texas, only about 80 received the award each year. It is not given lightly. As Chairman of the Local County Historical Commission, required to fill out a long form, naturally, your honor, to send it to the Texas Historical Commission detailing our activities for the year. In addition, the Local Historical Commission has to submit a written description of the three main projects for each year, which preserved, celebrated, or educated the community about the history of the county. With suggestions from the Scurry County Historical Commission, the judge officially points our members of the local commission. We lost a couple of active members this year. Paula Hatfield was from Snyder and moved from Snyder, or is moving. And Lynn Fuller had some health issues recently, although we expect him to return to Scurry County at some point. The Historical Commission and museum were closely intertwined. We want to thank the judge and the members of the Commissioners Court for supporting us in preserving the history of the county for present and future generations. Since COVID-19 had put a damper on our gatherings, it has been a while since I have been able to give a report, that's why it's, it's longer than usual, to the Commissioners Court. However, during the hiatus, the Historical Commission has remained active and has received the Distinguished Service Award each year. I think you will find it interesting to hear about some of the projects that the Historical Commission has been, been involved in in the last three years. In 19, in 2019, we renovated the site of the historic Witness Tree with a monument. A hackberry tree served as a witness point for early land surveys and was first used in 1873. That tree, that spot was first found in 1873 by surveyors who came through Scurry County to survey the area for the Houston and Great Northern Railroad. In 1873, there were still huge herds of buffalo here, and the Comanche Empire was very active. Most of the surveyors were military who came through. They were, well, they had protection to be able to come through here at that time. In 1876, in 1876, the Texas Legislature established Scurry County as a name on their official map. This whole area was just a vast, no settlement or anything, but they, they were constantly changing the county area. Finally, they just settled on Scurry County as a name on their, for their official name. But it wasn't until 1884, that's 1884, that the government, which you guys up here are now a part, was actually organized. That's why we had enough settlers here to organize a county government. At that time, every street and boundary in the county were marked from the point where the Witness Tree stood. So all our streets are, that's the starting point of how we, the way we measure them all is that Witness Tree. The tree eventually died and crumbled, and many, and for many years, only the stump remained until it also finally decayed. The Historical Commission designed a beautiful monument at the spot of the original tree, using bricks from the demolished Santa Fe Depot and included an embedded plaque atop the structure. Although designed by the Historical Commission, the monument was constructed by a professional bricklayer. To see the monument at the spot of the original tree, walk, walk across the street from the Scurry County Library north. It's on private property. And if you, and you can see at the monument and that original spot, meaning which was established many years ago. If you want to read the actual historical marker for the tree, it's located on the grounds in front of the library. Probably many of you have walked right past that marker and I have, and not even noticed it. They've been there for so long. The Witness Tree is an important landmark for Scurry County. Another project we did, the science class at Snyder High School about the section of Deep Creek, which runs through the town, beside the town square. In the days before Angles reached the area, the historic creek, always having water, provided a haven for buffalo and a campground for the Comanches. J. Wright Moore, the famous buffalo hunter and first white man to lay a wagon trap in the county as he came through hunting buffalo in this area, was said to have named the creek for its high banks. Many buffalo hunters built dugouts in the sides of the banks to shelter themselves. They hunted the animals. The creek didn't actually flow all the time. It had spring, it had fed, and it had various places where it had water and where it didn't. After Snyder was established, the creek was used for fishing, baptisms, picnics, cattle water, and recreation. Wolf Park, I don't know if you ever heard of Wolf Park, but at one time it was the premier place to go for recreation. Toll Park wasn't even here. That's a joke. The, it housed, the park, kind of put Toll Park as you're saying, it had, it housed a rodeo ground, a baseball field, and a racetrack for horses. And stretched along the banks of Deep Creek west of the Scurry, of the, of the courthouse, I mean, not courthouse, but the, the city hall. That area across from Deep Creek is the city hall that ran on, and it ran for a long way. It was a very large park. We have photographs in the museum of people enjoying that park. The students in the high school steam lab were to take a section of the creek and design a renovation of it as a park. The Historical Commission was asked by the high school, uh, high school science teacher, give the students a history of Deep Creek. Historical members dressed in period costumes, visited the classroom, designed the his, discussed the history of the creek with the students, brought books containing historical photographs and information, afterward answered questions. The event stimulated interest in and an understanding of the importance of this creek to Snyder's development and contributed to the students' eagerness to work on the project. Deep Creek was a very integral part of our early history in this, in the county. Next project, over several years, the Scurry County Historical Commission attempted to keep railroad from demolishing the historic Santa Fe Depot, but were ultimately unsuccessful. However, the Historical Commission was able to contract with Doug Baum to produce a professional video in the process. The video called Built to Last included a short history of the building, original footage of its final destruction, interviews with employees, and discussions with Historical Commission members about their attempt to save the building. The actual demolition was livestreamed on Facebook and viewed by many, many people, hundreds of people from several countries. The Historical Commission gave Doug, Doug Baum, the permission to put the video on his YouTube channel. Making this decision was the first step in the county, state, and even worldwide effort to encourage people to work hard to save their historic buildings, so that they don't disappear forever. Anyone who hasn't viewed this video can go to YouTube and search for it. To, you can search by typing in YouTube, Santa Fe Depot, Snyder, Texas, and it'll come up. It's, it's a really neat video if you haven't seen it. In 2020, members of the Historical Commission surveyed the historical markers in the county and chose five which badly needed restoration. Three members, including Ed and Sonia Benson, volunteered to carry out this project. They utilized the Texas Historical Commission training video by Bob Frittman, explaining the correct procedures to be used in refurbishing the monic, the markers. Carefully following the guidelines outlined in this formative video, they successfully gave the markers a much-needed facelift. Volunteers felt great satisfaction and accomplishment in the project. The markers in Scurry County are a very important part of our historical heritage, and they are popular not only to schoolchildren, visitors. You get people from around the state, from the United States that tour and look for these markers. And as well as our local residents who wish to understand history, they, they cover pretty much most of our areas about history. Another project, the Scurry County Historical Commission completed and applied for a undertold stories marker for the Lincoln School, which most of you here look like you're in the age that you probably knew that there was a Lincoln School, which was a segregated African-American school in Snyder. Its existence ended in 1965. This marker will be very important in documenting and preserving the heritage of the black community in Scurry County. Vernon Clay, a prominent member of the African-American community, whose father has lived in Scurry County for many generations, approached the Historical Commission about the possibility of an official Texas historical marker for the school. Interestingly, Vernon was in this, was in our, was in Snyder ISD's last segregated class, which we all know segregated means if the two places were separate, you couldn't go to the same school. And the next year became a member of its first integrated class. I actually attended the last segregated class at Snyder High, and my brother attended the first integrated one. After much research, I wrote the history, which is a documented research paper, which they require pretty extensive documentation and whatever, every fact show you have a source and all that. About eight pages long, and after approval of the information by Vernon, sent it to the Texas Historical Commission in November 2020. When the marker is finally cast and installed, Vernon and the Historical Commission plan a marker dedication involving all of Scurry County. The marker will be at the site of the demolished Lincoln School, where the building was, which is now no longer there. And it, but it will be on the right of way owned by the city of Snyder, with whom we work closely. The commemoration of Lincoln School, which was so important to the lives of many African-Americans, is long overdue, and the marker will honor the tremendous spirit and accomplishments of that community in spite of the obstacles and barriers they had to overcome during that period of history. The country's, you know, come a long way. In 2019, a resolution was passed by the Texas Legislature, and this is another, and signed by Governor Abbott, declaring the second Saturday in September is Quanah Parker Day throughout Texas. Our county is home to five cultural attractions to give homage to Quanah and his Comanche tribe who roamed this region. This was a region that Quanah Parker was in a lot, and that's been documented by sources. These attractions include two oil paintings portraying Quanah, Tundra Shook, which is down in the, down in the courthouse here. Three Historical Commission markers which make reference to Quanah, a 19-foot bronze statue of Quanah by Terry Gildrick at WTC. But if you haven't ever gone out and seen that, it's probably the best statue of Quanah Parker in the state. A 19-foot arrow on a square, and an acrylic razor-sprayed painting of Quanah in the museum, which was done by Carol Bullard and Paula Redwine Bluntford. For Quanah Parker Day in 2020, we produced short onsite videos that gave a brief history of how the idols in each location related to Quanah. Members of the community read these histories for the videos. We then posted the videos on the Scurry County Historical Commission and Museum Facebook pages. The feedback and comments proved to be a highly successful heritage tourism initiative because they were viewed by people throughout the state. We partnered on this project with the city of Snyder, Scurry County Commissioners Development Corporation, Scurry County Museum, West Texas College, Jacob Commerce, Texas Plains Trailery. You can find these videos by going to the Scurry County Historical Commission Facebook page and keep on scrolling down until you get to September 2020. Okay, we're getting to the last year, which was probably what I would be giving you if we hadn't had those other years that we weren't able to go through COVID. The Historical Commission will continue to work on the historical marker for the Lincoln School. School. Getting a marker is quite an involved process. Since the Lincoln School is considered an Undertold Story by the Texas Historical Commission, the Texas Commission will pay for the marker. For all historical markers throughout Texas, the Texas Historical Commission writes the inscription for the marker, using the documented information from the local historical commission. And after receiving, they write the inscription from the information we gave them. Sometimes it's not exactly like we thought it should be, and so they will let you go back and forth, talking about the wording, discussing it, but they're very, they're very easy to work with. And so we suggested a number of changes to their inscription, and they seemed open to our suggestions, and we were getting close to getting the marker, because after that, they have to go to a committee to approve it, and then they have to cast it. There's only, I think, one place in the state that can cast this marker, so, so I'm not sure when it'll be done, but we've got it, we've got it done, approved, and it's gonna happen on the weekdays. The Scurry County Historical Commission, next project, partnered with the Scurry County Museum and its board to increase the oral history collection of the museum. We have an oral history collection, and one thing about oral history is that you can record the people in their own words, but it takes time to listen to them, and they need to be transcribed to really be used for documents. But now we have like these transcription programs that you can read into, and they're very accurate, and they'll transcribe them, so somebody doesn't have to go through and listen to the tape and write it and go back and forth and write it down, which they had to do before. So we're able to get that into our collection. We added a number of these to the collection. And the last final project was the historical commission continued an ongoing project to care for our current historical markers. These markers are really important to Texas, as are all throughout the state, and they're an important part of explaining our Texas history as well as local history to our citizens and to people that visit. It's amazing how time passes and takes its toll on them. To completely restore a marker using the correct procedures and not damage them is a meticulous and time-consuming process, but they can be restored to excellent condition. Ed and Sonia Benson recently repaired seven markers which had been vandalized kind of around the square. The markers are an invaluable resource for telling the history of Scurry County. They're visited not only by county residents, but also by, I mean, out-of-towners. The Vincents report that we have fifty-five markers resident in Scurry County. These markers have been done over a period of many years, many people working on them, different groups. And thirty are in excellent condition. Some of them just seem to, for some reason, I don't know if it's the weather, where they are, the sun, they stay in good condition. Other ones weather pretty badly and get all faded out and even hard to read. And so ten of the remaining have been refurbished, get the sand, the paint, and the varnish, and the rest, we've got on our list, and we're gonna refurbish them, which is not that many now, and get them back to really good condition. That ends my report, and I want to thank the county judge and the commissioners once again. Thank y'all for your support in preserving our county history. And I will leave a copy of this for y'all, for y'all's records.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I caught in there that a hint that we have a position or two to fill, so, at least one.
Yeah, every year, you know, I think over two years, we, the judge, one points commissioner, I mean, members of the commission, we, you know, there are generally ones that we asked you to, but you can put somebody else on if you want to. But anyway, yeah, we were able to that point where we, if you remember.
All right, I'll let me give you these, these are the DC service awards, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, court to discuss and consider contracting with Chapman Firm to provide legal services relating to alternate construction methods and construction documents for the ARPA funds EMS and helping construction. There's a certain process we have to follow when we start a construction project, and you have to start with legal. So our county attorney does not do that type of legal work, and he suggested the Chapman Firm, Tiffany Liel specifically, he's spoken to her, and she is willing to provide those services for us. And she will go over the six types of construction that we are allowed to do, such as the, oh, there's six different ways that you can go about doing the construction. It's either having a general contractor or several different ways. So I'll be able to get more information on, or she'll provide more information on what those six different ways are if we decide, choose to go with this firm to provide those legal services. For, usually she's, I believe they said they charge ten thousand dollars per project, but if we were gonna do both projects, it would be fifteen thousand in the legal services for those two projects.
I gotta say, I appreciate the committee looking into the things that were possible to do, and the health unit and EMS buildings, EMS is just, they're stuck. No parking, dangerous road. We've been blessed to have funds that would remedy that. The health unit is in terrible shape, variable buildings, the four floors that flood the street. And so appreciate you guys doing the work that you've done with the committee members that you had, and bringing this forth to us, and I've made a motion that we allow the, to contract with the Chapman Firm to provide the search relating to the alternate construction methods and construction documents of the ARPA funds EMS and Health Unit Administration.
Is the ARPA funds approved?
Yes. Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Any favor? Thank you, appreciate that. All right, court to discuss tax rate, take record vote, and schedule public hearing. I'm gonna go over a few things, and then we'll take some public comment, and then we'll have some discussion. So the current tax rate is point five three six one zero. The no new revenue rate is point three nine three five. Voter approval rate is point four eight seven two. First thing I'm gonna mention is that, does this fall under there? I'm willing to, we're still gonna be able to make some decisions on some things today. Dana Hartman has tendered her resignation, and effective September fifth, we'll have a meeting on, next week, on the thirtieth, to discuss burn ban and accepting her resignation to accept her resignation or, and/or look for a, appoint an interim, and then start the search for a new department head there. She's also requested to remove the raise from the budget. So with that, I want to remind you that a couple of weeks ago, when we started this process, I mentioned that we are not taxing for six hundred thousand dollars worth of road materials because of the grant, or road and bridge because of the grant. Angela was in here the other day and reminded us that we haven't been spending out of that because we haven't been doing those projects, so it's coming out of AdAlorm. We're gonna end up in a situation where we have a problem in a few years if we don't start taxing for those materials and/or for those lines. And with that in mind, I took all of the things that we discussed out of the budget. I did go back and with the six hundred thousand in mind, thinking that we need to start taxing for that, or we're gonna end up in a problem in a few years. I added twenty-five thousand for the cloud seeding program, because you really seemed interested in that, and we all seemed interested in that. I spent half a million dollars into the emergency reserves, we hadn't done that, we didn't do that last year, we were trying to stay ahead of, well, we were in a bad, bad way, everybody was. Put a hundred and eighty-six thousand for capital improvements. Reason for the eighty, a hundred and eighty-six thousand for capital improvements is a couple of things that come up this year. We had an air conditioner that went out that we had to pull, do a budget amendment for. We should, we don't have any money set aside for projects that need to be done when they come up, such as the air conditioner. Another example, it's not the same fund, it's a different fund, but you had some equipment that, you had to do a budget amendment on that. You're looking at needing some equipment as well. So we need to plan ahead. We need to stop thinking about today, we still need to think about today, but we need to think about tomorrow, next year, and five years from now, ten years from now. We need to be ahead of the game and not behind the curve. This year mineral values were up over a hundred percent. Property valuations didn't go up that much, so the additional money that we're looking at this year is mineral valuations. So with that, I'll take some public comments.
Most of this is a one-time thing.
Most of this is a one-time thing, yeah. Let me give you an example, the emergency reserves right now is a million and a half, and we set that fund up because we were out of reserves, period, at one time, when I came in office, there were, there was no money. We were in a bad state. So we started that emergency reserve fund, keeping in mind that it's about a million dollars a month to operate. Suggested is six months, we've got a month and a half, so we need to start planning for that. Was it Mason County, the courthouse burned down?
But that emergency reserves you set up to declare emergency, and all five of y'all have to vote, so just keep that in mind.
Absolutely, yeah. And so, not just courthouse, but if we had a tornado come through, you know, there's all kinds of emergencies that could happen that would, if we were shut down, if we weren't able to, we wouldn't have any money, we'd be in a problem. So that's why I put that half million there. So there's all kinds of rumors out there about what I did this week, and if I had the power that was suggested over Facebook this weekend, I could roll the wall. Thank goodness I don't. There are four others here who share this responsibility with me. It's not just me. I make suggestions. I took everybody's request this year and put it into the budget. I didn't cut any requests at any time. We had meetings, we said we're gonna leave them in there and let the full court decide. The full court decided on all of those, some were kept, some weren't. So thank you for the thought that I have that much power, but I really don't. It's really this court that has the power. So with that, I will take some comments and some questions from the, from the public, if you fill out a form. Ms. Summers?
I would like to know where the one million dollars in AdAlorm taxes that was kept back from the road and bridges went. I was told it was in the general fund, so basically I'm assuming that it has been blocked.
I don't know what one million dollars you're talking about.
My spreadsheet screen out that.
I haven't seen your spreadsheet, you've gotten blocked on everything.
I know, I know. But it's brought up last time, and it was five hundred thousand.
What was, what was five hundred thousand?
At a road and bridge, they had, they got a road and bridge just been, because they've been shorted. He didn't say that, but I know it.
Talking about this money that we used at Road and Bridge to fund the budget last year, rather than using different funds.
So, yeah, okay, all right. So as we've said, we have a grant from Textod that we use six hundred thousand dollars a year from. We did not tax that money because we were using that grant. That's where that money is. It wasn't ever taxed because we were using the grant.
It was never put into road bridge.
It was never put into.
Road and bridge has been shorted one million dollars over the last couple of years. It's obvious in the budgets, if you look at the numbers.
We've had the grant for three years now, six hundred thousand.
I'm not talking about a grant, I'm talking about outright AdAlorm taxes have been shorted.
Okay, I don't know how else I can explain that. Instead of taxing for the money, we used grant money.
Can we request what roads be repaired?
That was, with the grant, they had to give a list, and you know this better than I do, Terry, because you were a big part of that at U2, Sean. So I'll leave that to y'all to discuss.
Textod requires that we come up with a budget and the roads that would need to be repaired. And so each precinct put in to that budget with Textod, the roads that we felt like were being torn up mainly by oil field, that's where the grant came from, from the legislature. Textod is administering it, and you have to go by that budget and by what roads you have put in there to, and they don't, they don't all have to have those trucks running down them, most, ninety percent of them do, if not more. And so that's, that is something that can be changed, but it's very difficult to do. And this is the last year of that grant. We have been waiting on rock that's been promised forever from different quarries that have sold out because of wind, wind and solar across the state. And so, for instance, we were being able to haul out of Sweetwater, which is, was awesome because we had been hauling from Slaton and Vilmore and up here at, close to Abilene and different places. And that, so that really gave us a reprieve, we were able to get that one year. They took it back to Eastland, that was an additional five thousand dollars per mile to use it out of Eastland. The reason that rock is so good is because it's angular, so the rock we had been using is very slick and hard and very difficult for the oil to grasp.
Right.
So we're trying to do the best we can.
Yeah.
And according to what Textod.
But there was a specific list of roads you had.
Oh, we have that list, absolutely.
For instance, the block line road between, say, Thirty-seventh and Three-Fifty, that is horrible and dangerous. I mean, two trucks going by there, they're inches between hitting each other.
Was that part of the?
Yes, we are, as soon as we get started going to Y, on that, yeah. And it was. You are wrapped, it is.
Block line road.
Yes.
And that was part of the grant, you put that, so.
Yes. And that will be paid for out of that.
I mean, just last week, I basically ran off the road.
I drive it all the time, I know. And we're getting the same thing in lots of roads like that, that you may not have traveled. I mean, there, people are running, my wife and I have been picking up trash on three different roads that this solar system is gonna use, because I wanted them to say, I wanted to tell them, we've got a clean road, you take care of it from here on till, with your five hundred people that's gonna be working out there. And so we were out Saturday, and people flying by us on Kemp Springs Road, which is about like block line, and they were going by us seventy-five, eighty miles an hour. Not everybody, I mean, in fact, the oil field traffic trucks were actually running the speed limit, which is sixty on that road. And so we're widening that road. Thank God, because of the wind farm out here at Coyote, we were able to buy some equipment. One of the piece of equipment is called a road widener, requires a large skid steer, and you can take millings and you can actually put from one foot to three foot, just by having a truck back up to it, and it's got a conveyor belt, and it just widens the road. Use some of that, I believe, out there on, on your road, just recently, block line. Or y'all did that by hand.
We did by hand.
Okay, it looks kinda like that machine. But, so it makes it a lot quicker than doing it by hand. And so it's happening everywhere, but the main thing is because of all the drought, because we're not being able to get materials that we need. We're gonna go back and, because we found out recently that Ari James, which is a rock that we used to use all the time, which is very round and slick, very difficult for the oil to hold to, unlike the angular rock. But we're gonna go back to it because we need to use this grant, and because that's what we used to, all we had used, have access to. The problem has been that there's a lot of fines in this rock, and so it keeps the oil from being able to fill in between the right-sized rock. I'm going over, yeah, I could talk about this all day long.
All right, did you get your question answered, Terry?
Basically, when do you think they will start working on that road?
It's gonna be fairly quick, I thought. Ten, Terry's forming it yesterday, so.
There's a list, and we have to follow that list, or we have to change it and agree to it in court. it in court.
My other question is, y'all were saying each precinct, I guess, is needing new equipment. Do you not share the equipment?
We only have one that's wanting new equipment and when we need it and he needs it, that's impossible to do. We do share it at times when we can.
Commissioner, hot topic over the last week, since last week's meeting has obviously been the golf course. And just in clarification, from my understanding, so that I can, so that I personally can understand what was, what was voted on.
All right.
The commission approved Commissioner Mitchell's motion to remove roughly $500,000 from the golf course budget. Am I correct that that $500,000 is a budget increase, not necessarily an operational budget, but a capital expenditure request?
Correct, yes. Yeah, there was some confusion on that and I apologize for that. So the budget, what was cut was 506,500, that was requested. 6,500 for ball washer and ball picker, half million dollars for cart paths and clubhouse or restaurants. That's what was removed. And so the budget for the golf course is still there without any new improvements to it.
And so actually, unlike the Facebook numbers that came out, next year's 7, 900 or 770,000, whatever, the true budget for the golf course is 293,000 for 2023, standing at this time because of the capital that was put in there, water lines, things like that for last year. So that's taking out, so it's now 293 instead of the 368,000 that was in there for last year.
Ms. Perry, you wanted to speak on?
Oh, yeah, I can answer my question. I was just here to emphasize the importance of having and maintaining the golf course. We have a gem of a golf course, especially now that the irrigation has been redone. You know, and we've had cash donations of around 110,000 and then equipment donations and ditching labor, you know, close to 90. Still work to be done, but we're well on our way. I know a lot of people don't play golf, but in the golf world, people will come from all over to play a really nice, well-managed golf course. And we have a chance for our golf course to be that. When people come to play, they eat in town, they buy gas, they shop. We're actually hosting, you know, a senior ladies tournament in September, which we're utilizing the Martha Ann's, the Scory County Golf Co., uh, Scory County Museum for our events. We'd have a shop around it, they'd be shopping, you know, about, you know, 12, 15 different stores. And in order to bring people and businesses to our community, our community has to have nice amenities, good golf courses are must. It's a quality of a life amenity. Snyder actually has two great golf courses. But since there are only nine holes, we need both courses to support the play of a town this size, especially with all the golf teams that we have in our, you know, in our county. And we need to move forward, I think, not backward. And so the improvements that we've already made, you know, that they've been great, but I think we can make it better. And the cart paths, we're definitely on our wish list and that, that cart, those cart paths would bring in, just put our course over the top. It's a one-time thing, you know, I mean, of course, every year they'd have to be maintained, but it is a big expense for one time. But it would bring in more members, more cart sheds rented, easier to have tournaments and easier to just bring people into our town. So like I said, that, that is definitely on our wish list and would like for it to still be there in our budget, so.
May I put you in a spot for just a moment?
Yes.
With tournament?
Yes.
That you're bringing, how many folks are coming?
We can have up to 72. We're hoping for 62 women from all over West Texas area. This is our 30th year, it was started in 1992 with, I think, 35 women that were played. And it's been up to 7, like I said, the max, of course, can hold to 72. But we're, we're thinking we're going to have at least 64, which would be eight plats of eight. And so real excited. They love coming to Snyder. You know, this is the third time we posted it.
Probably. Thank you.
Yeah, four nights, four nights and it's 11 through the 15th, they stay four nights in our hotels.
Okay.
That is great. Saturday's golf tournament had teams that came from Jaton, Sweetwater, Post, Big Springs, La Mesa, it all came here and played.
How much money did we raise for Gateway on top of that?
Almost.
A ton of it.
Yeah, hundreds of thousands.
It goes beyond that.
Did they stay the night? Do you utilize our hotel?
I didn't check on me and I couldn't tell you.
You're somebody.
So what you're saying is it doesn't just impact our hotels and motels. You raised money for Gateway. I didn't aware, I wasn't aware that you were raising money for Gateway. You know, $100,000 is, I sit on the, with Central Texas Council of Governments, one of the grant programs, and they are applying for grants every year to supplement because they, they have a minimal budget. They operate off of donations, basically. So thank you for doing that for them. Yes, sir.
The rock that y'all are talking about, how many tons of rock are we talking that is needed?
Totally about 2,000 tons.
That's not a great deal.
We're talking about, we're talking about grading. Core rock, you know, that hasn't been washed and that can't just be.
Has anybody contacted the Northern South Platte Railroad and asked them what they have available? Because they have different vendors they can get it from, bring it in the box car, which is why I should have a truck in it to, to the location here in town. Has anybody thought about that?
We have talked to the railroad in the past and it wasn't something that they really wanted to do.
I understand that.
And they were saying also that because of the way they do it, it's somewhat like WL Plastics, they bypass WL Plastics and then they come back and bring them, so that makes their freight even more.
I understand that.
And so you've got to have a place to unload it. Don't have a place to unload it.
They don't have a tin track here in town? I would bet they do.
Not to my knowledge.
I would bet they have a tin track here in town.
If you could help us with that, that would be awesome.
I'd be glad to help you all with that.
Thank you.
Who do I need to discuss that with?
I'll be glad to talk to you anytime.
Okay. In reference to your equipment, apparently his equipment must be in pretty bad shape or something. Is there other equipment that, that belongs to another county commissioner or another part of the county that he could purchase from them and do some budget swapping to do that?
You're talking about surplus equipment?
Yes, there's surplus equipment, is there any equipment that's not needed? It's got new equipment that's been replaced or anything like that that can be budgeted over to him and then do a little budget swap or however that's done to get him better equipment in itself, equipment that's not, that's not worthy of being used. So I've already, the only piece of equipment we had in, you know, at the end of last week was for the loader and we've already purchased it last week.
Okay.
I'm just trying to brainstorm here, since this is my first meeting, to assist any way that would help the county financially rather than going out and spending more money than you have to spend.
Thank you.
That's what I was kind of getting at as far as sharing equipment, getting on the calendar, maybe having calendar and precinct one using precinct two's equipment instead of having to go spend more money.
Well, it's just like when it rains, everybody's blading their roads. There's no way that we could swap equipment at that time. When we're hauling material, we all haul together. And you, we've got a total of seven trucks, I believe. And if you don't have that many, it takes forever to do it. So you are leaving your precinct unattended during that time. And so we get together on chip sales. All of us work together and we've all bought the equipment together to do a chip sale, chip spreader, your distributor. Each one brings a 12 yard, two litter tube, and, and you have to work together to get it done. But just, when you, whenever a precinct has equipment that another precinct doesn't, we use them. We used precinct three's grid rover the other day because of rock that we had in our material that we purchased from a pit locally. And we don't have one. We borrowed theirs. They're talking about using the road widener, which we have. And so we do use, utilize each other's equipment when possible.
I would just like to say, of course, I'm here mainly because of the golf course, but I'm an old 80-year-old woman who doesn't have many outlets. And I love to play golf and my family hates. My family's been here, been taxpayers since the 20s. And I pay school taxes. I also pay taxes in Ward County, in Parker County, in Wise County. And my taxes exceed my income from those counties, I might add, but I still pay them. And because I pay school taxes and I have no one in school, I did teach here for a long time, but I don't want the school to cut, shut down just because I don't have anybody there. I don't want the museum to close because I don't go there very often. I don't want the park to close down because I'm usually there on the 4th of July and I enjoy it, but I'm happy for other people who do and have, who have other interests. And this tournament that we have coming in, all of these little ladies, you have to bid on it two years in advance in order to have it in your, at your location. And everybody loves it. We're just a big group that loves everything, you know, and they'll, we have some fun-loving ladies, you might get to meet them one, when they come. But I just wanted to say I appreciate all of you and I appreciate the hard work. And my husband, who has been deceased for a long time, had a saying that I've carried on for a long time. He says, "Some people would complain about ice cream." So I'm sorry that you get all those complaints, but I would appreciate your help in staying with the golf course.
Any further discussion in public? Terry, you had some conversations with some folks about the golf course, some ideas.
Yeah. And so I had a member come to me this morning and tell me that the memberships are too low and that they would actually, a group of people wouldn't mind seeing those rides in order to keep the golf course. And they said, "These are the goodness people I ever saw in my life." I had another member to contact me and say, "You know, we're beautifying the area out there with zero scape." They said to me that this won't bring in more money, but it makes it look better. And I thought, you know what? There are ladies that will come and look at beauty and not even play golf. And so I believe it does bring revenue because if they come there, they're going to fill their cars up with gas, they may stay in our hotels, they're going to eat at a restaurant. It just goes around and around in the benefits that we receive. And so the, the donations that came in from you guys for getting the water line replaced and, and from not, not just wealthy donors, but just everyday people that just love the course and willing to work. A member told me, "You know what? We don't need a new, one new bathroom. We needed to repair it. We've got a water line that's been cut. If we had a ditcher, we'd just repair it ourselves." And they do that kind of thing all the time. And it's a vital, vital part of our community. And it brings in so many. There's lots of, of so different ones. rodeo association had a tournament out there and brought in quite a bit of money from that tournament. And so it just, we just got, we can't just section one thing out and say, "Oh, we don't need that." Because as long as we can, we do need it, especially when people will put their own money up to have it done. We've had one donor that's given almost $2 million to that course and it still wants to. So I, I think it's absolutely necessary that we help in making sure that the capital improvements that are needed are done so that those people can come. And then people can stay on the cart path if you actually out the cart path.
And so. What was your proposal on the capital improvements? You mentioned something, Terry.
Well, I just said that we absolutely at least ought to put it back to what it was last year and put that in capital improvements, which is about $70,000, which won't do the cart path. I think y'all have a number of, what, 400,000 to actually do the cart paths, is that correct? And.
That does both sides correct, seal payment on both sides, yes.
And so some of the members have suggested we use millings. I'm willing to have with that. I'll give some of my millings to get that done. There are, there's so much giving, it's not just taking, it's also giving. And a lot of people play that course. Every time I go by it, it's people, I don't play it, I used to. Maybe one of these days I will again. I'd like to go play with some of you ladies when y'all have that thing. I mean, there's nobody who takes care of you better than a lady. But I, I think that we need to put something back in there if we do it by the year. But also that, some of that is matching funds. So if you spend 250, turn 50,000, the matching funds are 250,000. I mean, this guy, he's unbelievable and always has been. And so some have suggested that, well, just let him get what he wants. Well, he doesn't work that way. If you'll match, he'll match. If you don't match, he won't match. And so it's, it's something that we just, we need to do and we need to think about the better that course gets, the more useful that it is. And I don't care what guys say, ladies need restrooms and they need restrooms at work.
Do they not have a restroom?
They, they, they're needing some repair.
If you went, you would, I think you would agree.
I can't afford a membership when I have to pay taxes, so sorry.
Question?
We do what we want.
I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So now we've, we've worked hard for four weeks now, we're moving stuff from this budget and now we're adding it back? You're kidding me. You've got to be kidding me. You have got to be kidding me.
Okay. So we've had conversations about.
We're removing.
Ms. Summers, that's, that's going to be enough. We're going to go into discussions now. All right. So there's a thought about 70,000 back into there. I've mentioned that we, I added for your thoughts and your discussion, 25,000 for Cloud City, half million for emergency reserves and 186,000 for capital improvements. And mentioned to you that Dana requested that the salary increase for the health department be removed. So let's have some discussions on those.
Okay. Cloud City. I have talked to CRMWD, they're, they are willing to look at, and they, they say that it's actually their, their goal to help in the community and so that they would absolutely like to partner with us on that. On top of that, I've talked to ranchers and farmers, they're willing to do the same thing. I think you were speaking to maybe DCS if you had a chance.
Hadn't had an opportunity yet.
Okay. So lots of people are interested in doing this. And so maybe the 25,000 wouldn't be needed, but you don't know.
Right.
And it looks like right now, my grace, you don't need it. Well, three inches will be gone before you can turn around. It'll be as dry as it was if, if we don't continue to get it right. So it's definitely something, I mean, we're talking about 2023 here, something that we definitely need to keep in our budget.
Your study?
A little suggestion of Cloud City worked pretty good. It doesn't mention last week, it's been registered.
It's mentioned at every court meeting.
That was the same.
Because that's something that'll fire our budget. Everybody, the light will be dropped.
That's right. Did the lake come up? Anybody again?
I hadn't heard.
No? Didn't rain in the right spot? All right, the other items. Emergency reserves, capital improvements.
If we don't build our emergency reserves, everybody would be, it may be unhappy. Or a lot of, some people may be unhappy about doing that. But the first disaster that we had, you'd be mad because we didn't do it. And some people say, well, FEMA will take care of it. No, they will, they will not even kick in for a year if they kick in that quick. And so we've, we've got to get to a six month emergency fund. That's, that's my opinion.
I just don't think it's time to do it.
Can y'all speak up? When is the right time to do it?
Because the way it's now.
Okay, is there a right time to do it? How do we phrase that?
Probably not. Can y'all speak up, please? It's, it's still a half a million dollars.
If we don't do it when oil is 100% up, when do we do it?
I just, I guess it's time for you to forward back this year a bit. But that's my opinion.
You're asking.
Thank you. So is this 500,000 for emergency fund? That's the only thing it can be used for?
The only thing it can be used for. Be real quiet down there.
I'm absorbing.
Time to stop absorbing and start giving opinions. This is you two, this is all of us.
I understand that. Well, I have something to say, I'll say it.
Ms. Summers, that's enough of the comments. One more, and I'm going to make a motion to remove you for contempt of court.
Can I ask a question?
No, ma'am, we're in discussions now.
No, I'm asking about the Cloud City. I didn't hear whether y'all approved it, tabled it or what? That's all I'm asking.
Neither. We just have a, we reached an agreement for now.
Okay, to kind of table it? Okay, thank, that's all, one minute.
It really is hard for us to hear.
Yes.
Thank you. So.
I could not hear that.
We've got one for and one against emergency reserves. I put it in there so you know where I stand. You know, we don't, this is going to be our last opportunity to do this, to make a decision. Because we have to have the hearing on September 6th. And set the tax rate for sure.
Well, can we not have another meeting and discuss more budget?
That's what we're here for now. Why, and we've done that two meetings already.
Because it's not only the agenda.
No, it's not. But we can, exactly, it's not. But we can discuss all of that under this because it's discussing the tax rate and that goes towards the tax rate. Is there something specific you would like to discuss?
No. I just always set the tax rate. Seems like every time we decide to discuss something, it gets rolled out, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
I, I spoke to Mike Hartman and he said it absolutely fits. Because of the word that we are required to use in our budgets, because of the last two legislative sessions. He said it fits. Well, I think we need an emergency fund. And if that's the only thing it can be used for, I'm for it.
Then we. Yes, or do you want to?
Well, yeah, I mean, I agree we need it. I just don't know that now's the time. But again, we got mineral values are up 100%. We all know that that's temporary. The dead gum, everybody's, everybody has taken a hit this year, the last couple of years. And if we don't stop at some point, it's never going to end.
Tax rate's going to go down five. You'll see, it's going to go from 48, or I'm sorry, from 53, 61 to 48. At least, minimal. Because mineral values are up. What about the 186,000 for capital improvements?
Now, it's just like this courthouse. It would cost that much trouble to replace the aging units that are on top of this courthouse. And when they go down and you don't have the money to do it, then that's out. And if you don't plan for something, you're going to fail every time. And there's how many buildings in this county that are maintained by the county? Fifteen? 186,000 is nothing. That's what it can cost. I mean, just putting a roof on the other day, 22,000. Better think ahead.
So this contingency fund.
The capital improvements?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand the things that have to be done, like air conditioners. Yes, you don't want to be in this great office, that's 200 degrees. But I also don't want to spend it on something that doesn't have to be done.
Sure.
Sure. I'm all for keeping everything running. But I'm not for. That projects that doesn't benefit anybody.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I do.
It would be a committee court decision to repair one, right?
I believe if you have a request for your, for your department, it needs to go in capital improvements. That's what that line is for. I don't think that we should take from one area because, or budget for one area because we've got something in the back of our mind, hey, I want this, so I'm going to put it up here. I disagree with that 100%. Now, that should be specifically for those situations that it's not an emergency. So we don't take it from emergency funds, but it's a situation where we didn't plan on that and something happened.
That's my point. It won't be taken out for park benches.
Sure.
Blue flowers.
No, I, I'm 100% with you on that.
Because that's, that's what's been done, mostly in the past, but years ago. They have a fund like this and we got lots of nice artwork. No pun intended.
I think you know my position on that.
I do, I do. But that, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Sure.
Because we don't purchase stuff like that.
I agree with you.
It is for emergencies, but something you have to do.
Yes, sir.
That's my view.
Absolutely.
And any, any withdrawal out of this line will go before the direction of court approval?
Yeah, we have to.
We'd have to, yeah. You'd have to hire someone to do it, so you'd have to go through this.
For sure, anything over 10,000. But anything under that was still, we would have to approve it. And that's generally going to be through the line item transfer or budget amendment that way.
It would be a budget amendment.
Right.
The repairs, you'd have to cooperate or do it through an apple. You'd have to agree to do it.
The good thing about the artwork was that it's, I had an art guy come in two or three years ago and he said, you lucky guys. It was in Genovale. He said, that artwork just doubled because they quit making it. So sell the artwork and you'll have lots more money.
You hear what you gotta do.
All right, so your capital improvement.
I'm an art seller.
All right, so where are we on that?
I agree.
Just reluctantly?
Not reluctantly. But I just know as long as spent, what is for, that's fine. And if we reuse it, then it's still there. That's my view.
Honestly, I don't know what project you're thinking of when you put 186,000 in there. I think it was a half million dollars it took to put the air conditioning on this courthouse.
I just wanted to start somewhere. If we have those. I want to start somewhere.
Yes, I understand.
Do you want to leave the salary the same for the department, for the health department as it currently is? Not what was put in the proposed budget?
Was it 63?
No, it's 49. Okay.
That's my opinion.
That's fine. Okay. Okay, and you mentioned 70,000 for capital improvements for the golf courses. Thoughts on that? To start with, cart paths.
I don't have an issue with the golf course. We all form precincts, so spend lots of time out there. 70,000 dollars is not going to reach you 50 feet for cart paths.
I think it'll get you a little further than that. If you're using lay down asphalt, you're, you're pretty close to right. But if, if. If we use millings, it won't cost that much. So, and if, and they even, I mean, a member said, we can get live skister, we'll, we'll do the work ourselves. So if we take a belly dump out there and dump it, they'll take it and fix their own cart paths. That's pretty amazing. Agreed? So there you go.
We just have an issue with giving up our milling that we get from the state because we're only allotted so much. I use them.
I do too, but I, I can do it without a belly dump load. To make sure that a part, department in our community that's needed it. We've talked about this for 15 years. And it's just about time to do something about it instead of talking about it. And if one belly dump loaded, it's going to hurt you more. But that's, I mean, that's up to y'all. Do what you want to.
Can I ask a question?
We're, we're in discussions now, so.
But in keep in mind that, I'm, I'm just saying to you that we should just keep the budget like it was last year. The 368 until, instead of 293. Not raising the budget, just keeping it the same. Giving them a little capital to be able to do some things, the things they've done out there. Repair some restrooms, do a little bit of cart paths. I mean, we keep talking about ball washers and picking machines. I don't know if y'all can, how bad you need that, but I know it's cart paths more. And restaurants.
For sure.
Ball washing.
Yeah.
I have a problem putting back, where was that last year? I mean, my intention was not to shut the course down. I have a problem putting back what was in there last year.
Okay. I don't either. Yes.
Why they don't predict the weather?
Mike, one of those, we're going to have, because after all, it's a. Makes you think that everybody's angry. They're not. All right, so. Was there anything else you wanted to discuss in the budget? To leave, take out?
You want to look at it all?
Hold up for the cart paths. Which I know they don't do the work. I would make it reasonable. Not 70,000 on that. But if we ever do, which we will, get more millings. For all seven trucks around, each precinct can give up one belly dump. That'll save 70,000 out of the budget. They're free. They'll do the work. Everybody benefits. Because we don't have time nor the equipment that we do, but to actually do that.
Most work from this too big to put out there. But we can, even if we, and I think we need to, we need to talk to Sid and make sure the, the maximum amount of weight that he'd want on the course or where he would want it to, where it wouldn't cause problems with, with the course. And we can do that. That's something we're talking about. That's not.
There's a really nice kind of quick slaver, but.
It'd be a long way for Holloman and Skister.
How much is in a bell, in a belly dump?
So you're weighing about 80,000.
It'll go a long way. So full disclosure. In, in there, bringing it back up to the budget that it was last year. 368,452. 134,403 was budgeted for irrigation lines. Okay?
Was that was planned for donations?
It was.
Or is it not?
It was.
What I thought?
Yes.
You're saying something?
Well, we, we did have a lot of donations.
Do you have a total on the donations?
No. Yeah, the total on the donations was 109,550 in cash. But then all the, there is a lot of equipment, a lot of labor, a lot of ditching, all that, you know, time. What you donated. And I, I guess I shouldn't have shook, shook my head. I know that.
That's okay. All right, thank you. So if I remember correctly, we budgeted for tax dollars of match on that 30,000? 30,000 that we budgeted as a match? So.
So.
No, no.
We can get the total. What is left after the donations?
So ad valorem tax. This is the ad valorem tax that went. So abhorrent tax, this is the abhorrent tax that went was three sixty-eight four fifty-two towards.
Yeah, I'm talking about the. Sure, but. You said you had a hundred nine thousand.
Yeah, a hundred, yeah, a hundred nine thousand in cash that was donated, of course, that's all been spent. Everything went up whenever from the time that it doubled or tripled in price and stuff. You know, it's huge.
Quite a bit. Yeah, I don't remember how much. I remember that it was about thirty thousand that we put towards that. But abhorrent tax for that was three sixty-eight four fifty-two. And I think that was including. The amount. Not just. Go back to.
We leave the budget like it was. Three sixty-eight. Is there not? About four hundred? Four. Of course. Dollar, sorry, department head to line transfer.
Yes.
Do that much for it.
Yeah, because in there, that line for capital outlay costs of irrigations, we'll have to decide what we're gonna move that to, and that's a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
You know, made payment stays close says a lot. Where we're at, but with the donations. And I'm sorry.
Can you speak up?
I'm sorry you don't. Want a golf course with a bunch of ditches still there, whether you play golf or not. But that's my suggestion is for me to leave the budget. That. Donald being the department head has the ability for line transfer. He'll not take it. We didn't add to the budget.
Right.
We didn't take nothing away from. To complete the project or get what they need.
Okay. So go with twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, this year's.
Do a math.
Alright, not the twenty twenty-three? That was.
No.
Okay. Alright, that'll work. I just want to be absolutely sure we know what we're talking about. Anything else that needs to be discussed about the budget? Okay, let's discuss the tax rate. I'm gonna do some bad math in my head. Thank you. Okay, if we're gonna do that, you want to lower the amount. This would be at the forty-eight cents. Forty-eight flat. Do we want to remove some from? Five hundred thousand for emergency reserves or a hundred eighty-six for capital improvements? Do you want to lower one of those too? It's about two hundred seventy-five thousand difference. If my math is right, that would put us about a forty-five thousand over, forty thousand over. Hey, careful. Bear with me, thank you. About sixty thousand. Careful with that, it might apparently today. Put us about sixty thousand over that forty-eight, so do you want to move that sixty-nine thousand from capital improvements or emergency reserves?
I think we're too long capital improved, so I guess emergency reserve.
Put it about a hundred and thirty thousand that we would put in there. So we have one thought for emergency reserves, anybody else think differently? Okay. Okay, so. Moving on to take a record vote, this would set the tax rate at forty-eight cents. It's still. Point eight six one lower than last year's, or current year's, I'm sorry.
Who's had yours first?
Everything that we've discussed.
Still not happy with forty-eight cents. Maybe we'll break. There's a reason I say that. If. I don't care who it is. What age, you got a house financed. It's variable rate, your payments went up a bunch. Your taxes are still be up.
They're going down this year.
Yeah, but it's still gonna be more to come. See what I'm saying? Because that's what the revenue rate come on. It's the exact same money that we generated this year. Thirty-eight whatever.
Off the top of your head, do you know what the difference would be?
Yeah.
Hundred thousand dollar house. If the value went up, if it went up twenty percent, it's a hundred and twenty thousand.
The difference?
The difference between.
Yeah, it can't go up twenty percent, but a hundred thousand dollar.
Ten percent. Thank you, everybody, for bearing with us, we appreciate you.
You're welcome.
On a hundred thousand dollar home at forty-eight, it's gonna be four hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay.
Hundred thousand dollar on.
Fifty-three sixty-one?
Fifty-three sixty-one, five hundred and.
Thirty-six thousand. And then if it went up, if the value went up ten percent to a hundred and ten at forty-eight.
Five hundred and twenty dollars.
So that's, that's my point is. It's not coming down due to the increase in.
That's a hundred and ten thousand.
Forty-eight.
Dollar home times point. What's our rate this year? They all cut me off the spot.
The current year's, current year's fifty-three sixty-one.
You know, I really can't imagine with the interest rate environment that we've been in, that everybody had to finance their house at a thirty-year, fifteen at the very least.
That's five hundred and eighty, or five hundred and ninety dollars. Is what they would have paid last year, so it's going down a hundred, I mean, as far as, even if your, even if your value went up ten thousand, you're still paying. Eighty-nine. And then four eighty. A hundred and nine dollars less than what you would have last year. Even if the value went up. And that's just, that's a mess.
And if it's any consolation, I heard several representative senators and the governor state because of the twenty-nine billion dollar surplus that they have, that they're going to do what they did six or seven years ago, and they're gonna lower the school tax rate, which is a lion's share of what you pay in taxes. Of course, there'll be more interventions and there'll be more of these.
School rates did go down.
That they don't send any money for.
And on the homestead, the exemption changed from twenty-five thousand to. Yeah, it went to. No, forty thousand exemption.
So if they buy down fifty cents, that's gonna help all of us. And that's what they're saying they're gonna do, so. That gives us all a chance to breathe. And not on the backs of Skewery County that provides all the services that of all taxing entities, all the services are provided by Skewery County.
Let me make a motion that we set the tax rate at point four eight zero zero. So where do y'all think we should be and what should we cut to get to that point?
Needs to be about point, about point four four five. And we'll go through the rest of the budget to get it to that.
Okay, point four four five, you're cutting a million dollars out of the budget. What million dollars would you like to start cutting? Jess, where do you think it should be?
I'm in the same ballpark. I just, I have a problem with it going up. Going up over two, close to three million dollars, and all we can save out of it is about four hundred thirty thousand. Kill less than a million dollars while we can put up under that.
So where do you think it should be?
Like it should be close to that anyway.
Okay, so. What million dollars do y'all want to cut that? You say point four four five?
Yes.
And once more, I'll remind you that the three and a half percent that we can go up is gonna be hard to do, harder to do as we go along with the years. Would you like to take a break then after this?
It'd be great.
Alright.
How are you?
I'm good.
How are you? Good, love that.
Real, I just like to lie help.
Me too.
Then I got it there and I didn't say much, but I missed it. When I was born, I had your own snatter general, nobody knows where it is. He used to come, that had, yeah, he had two employees. And he didn't call by name. That was during the time. I didn't give this enough. I'm a word person. Thank you.
I thought I was thinking I was gonna get that hurting after your troubles. Yeah, I don't know. Or you were trying to have.
You know? Just give it to the D U G.
You you give it four-eight and four-four-five. Yeah, Saturday.
Sixty-one dollars is what they would pay?
At forty-eight.
No. Four thirty-nine dollars. So Janet, let me let me have those numbers, Janet. Let me let me if you'll give me that sheet. So that everybody knows what we're discussing here, what you were just telling the commissioners. At the forty-eight cents on a hun- hundred thousand, right?
Hundred, I did a hundred and ten thousand dollar home, just because y'all were talking about it.
Right.
Value's increasing, so I added a hundred, I mean, ten thousand. So it's on a hundred and ten thousand dollar home.
They would pay five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, correct? At point four-four-five, that same person would pay four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So it's a difference of thirty-nine dollars going from forty-eight to point four-four-five. And that's just Scurry County, Texas, that's not your whole tax bill?
That's on a homestead.
On a homestead.
Scurry.
What are you cutting?
I think if anything, we're going back to current notice. That leaves one million four hundred and two, two one thousand, this is plus one million, one hundred and six thousand and fifty-three.
So when you do that, you're taking away the ground supplies that that were added, the pool supplies that were added, education and training that was added. And his capital outlay requests, all of his capital outlay requests. Which he changed. He was still requesting an extra pump. So that when that pump goes down, gets back up.
If you're talking about the pump for the North Park, there isn't one?
No, it's pump for the pool and the splash pad. It covers three different areas, it's the same pump for all of them.
So you do a budget on that when it goes down?
Yeah, purchase the use pickup from the sheriff's department, materials to replace the fence around Winston, ballpark, ball field and backstop, water reel for irrigating North Park and finish the water well at North Park. That's sixty-five thousand that he was requesting there. Once again, if you don't maintain it, it's gonna go hot. I think take a look at the fence around Winston, you'll see why he wants to do that.
I think you do really easy, Doug. Take six hundred thousand out of road bridge and four hundred thousand out of emergency funds, and you're done. Do it for him. Not something that I want to do, Will. You need pumping water, I need water in North Park, we're gonna have a park at all. We've always had water there for the last five years because we didn't get it in the budget and we're heading for it. Got a well. Seems like the well's out of pump, didn't work.
Dan.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question or we don't?
Well, while they're discussing, we'll take some questions.
Okay, so I've done budgets for years for several different organizations and when you're looking at the budget, you have to really And when you're looking at the budget, you have to really consider what your vision is. And so I guess that's my question, as you're trying to consider what to cut, is does it line up with the vision that you have for Scurry County? You know, that you can't just pull something from the air. You need to, you know, does it fit into your three, five, ten-year plan that you have for the county? And so just want you guys to think about that as you're looking.
Thank you. Problem's not having not having a vision, problem is not following a vision. We've been talking about cart paths for fifteen years. Been talking about putting pumps in over North Park for five years. We got a well drilled, no, no pump, can't water the grass, can't have nice ball fields for those that use them. We've talked about Winston Field for five years, or longer. About redoing that fence because it's in horrible shape. Can't really utilize it the way that it needs to be utilized.
What's Winston needing? Just some tanning?
And of course, there's the some of the steel piping is bad too, it's rotting. Needs to be reworked, the whole thing is is pretty much shot.
Is it six or eight foot?
I think they were gonna bring it.
Or even higher.
I think it's even higher, but I think they were gonna bring the capital six foot.
They're talking about six foot.
Which are gonna be a lot more people happy about that because they knocked the ball over the fence. But nobody wants to go get it.
The only reason I ask, I would be willing to donate to that if.
That's awesome.
I've got a lot of, a lot of excess in both of those. If y'all need help there, just reach out if you wanna come look at it.
Our superintendent would probably be very happy. In fact, he'd probably have.
What we had on term and waterworks?
Working on sale?
Through it.
Yeah, we've gotta get a little more information to him to send it to the Public Utilities Commission.
Both courts has taken over.
Yes.
The legal.
Operating.
All the funds that were in there.
I didn't put that in the budget. Because they have taken over.
Well, they still have a.
There is some minor stuff in there. How much are you seeing out of? Whatever you see is not gonna be enough to make a difference. Seventy thousand?
Yeah.
That's, well, that's revenue. Water revenue. We, there, there's never been any tax dollars that's been put towards that. No add-to-lore on tax has ever gone for term reward. So that you can't even really consider.
Can I say one thing not budget related?
Yes, ma'am.
While Jason's here.
Not budget related?
Yeah. While Jason's here, since he hasn't. I wanted to thank him for getting that grant for that new investment. Because I just saw that in the paper. I wasn't aware of that last week.
Yeah, we turned the fifteen thousand dollar grant into two hundred and seventeen thousand.
Way to go.
First, you have to push that number to the Jefferson. And we have these finite, finite timelines. Twenty-five days after the proposed budget, you have to set the tax rate.
I have one more question. So you know how you guys had asked Heather to, James to come in at the youth center, you know, and create a way that her, that the youth center can can become more self-sustainable? Have we done that with the golf courses or with the airport entities at all to where they can be more sustainable? For example, her new proposed numbers for next year, actually, I guess they started, is that for one, for one kid, it costs two hundred dollars to become a member at the youth center. That does not include their sport fees. It does not include if they do after-school care or spring break care or summer care. And so, and then a second, like a sibling, would be a hundred and fifty dollars. So that would cost me, I've got two kids, it would cost three hundred and fifty dollars for us to just become members to be able to even play. And current member on the golf course is what, eighty dollars a month membership?
I don't, seven, I think.
It's eighty oh seven.
Is it eighty?
Eighty oh seven, okay.
Plus one ten for, I mean.
If you have a card, card shed. So I'm just, I'm just thinking, okay, youth center that serves poor kids is costing more than golf course that tentatively goes towards, you know, higher income. That's eighty dollars a month. So I'm just saying, have, have we ever taken a dive into it to try to make it more sustainable?
We have looked at it, we actually raised those just a couple of years ago. And it's something we can definitely look at again. I'm not opposed to.
I guess who does that rely on? Is that like a commission-based thing? Is that like a commissioner thing? Is that, like, who, I guess, yeah, is it, is it the department? Like, for any departments in, in the county? Does that, do they need to come to you and say, hey, how can I become more self-sustainable? Or is that more of like a commissioner things, like, hey, you can become? Like, how did it work with Heather? Did she come in and add, like?
Yeah, she came to this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And with the golf course, we, I, I asked Garland to look at it at that time, and she did. Airport, I asked them to look at it. This was with the prior director up there, asked him to look at that as well. And we did change it a couple of years ago, like I said, at the golf course. We haven't made any changes at the airport. We're kind of right in line at the time with everybody, so. Yeah, there, I mean, we're definitely, I'm personally definitely willing to look at that to see what other revenues can come in.
On that end, even though our rates, what they are, they're comparable with the college. There's a few dollars one way or the other different with the college. And that way, it's all about even. Where our increase has come in the last five years, each year it's increased, our income off of that has increased due to play and due to sales, resale, drinks, ice, all that kind of stuff. Gloves, golf balls. And so that has increased each year in five years. Each year it has increased more.
To bring in more profit?
Yes, bringing in more profit.
It's going up every year. This year's an anomaly because we have had to do the irrigation system, we had to start late on. Next year, I think it's gonna be a totally different story. I think we're gonna see more income next year.
Okay, just one more question. So, correct me if I'm wrong, the Scurry County Museum is its own entity, right? And it receives donations from the county, from the city, from the college?
No.
No college?
No college.
Just city and county?
No city. Just from the county.
Okay. Last year, I was, I had, they got money from the city.
College. It's for the building, the college. What'd you say? I didn't.
So, 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 do you, for the county, when you give the, the museum money each year, is that a donation that you're giving them? Or?
It's to help fund them. I don't know if you would turn that as a donation, or would just fund part of their.
Budget adds number.
Yeah.
So if the, if the golf course or the youth center were to ever go privatized, would you still be able to, to help fund where you, where you could? Or is that?
I don't know. I guess it would be, it's an enterprise fund, so.
I believe at one time, the museum, or with the senior center, we funded them, but I believe, very few commissioners or court is here from that time, but it was two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen when we brought them into the county. And so I don't remember the circumstances, but I believe they, lack of money coming from their own income. And so they were going to fail, and that's why I believe the county took them over as an entity, Department of Scurry County.
You're talking about senior center?
In the youth center.
Yeah. And so the senior center of the college was administering the grant, which now the director does. And they were wanting us to take, we'd already, already funded a majority part of it, they're just doing the grants. And so they were wanting to get out the administrative part of it, and send that administrative part over to us, which the director takes care of.
So they get seventeen thousand a year from the college?
You wait, hold on me.
Only not all of y'all, I mean, the three of you are the ones that suggested the point four-four-five, so I'm waiting on your suggestions.
Either you take it out of the park, or you take it out of the emergency fund, or you take it out of the contingency fund, and we're really, really close.
Okay, so you're saying, what did we decide, four hundred and forty thousand from the emergency reserves? How much? Four hundred and forty, what we were gonna put in there? And then hundred and eighty-six? Yeah. Seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. You got to get to a million.
And that's cutting what?
That's cutting the emergency reserves that I suggested, a hundred and eighty-six that I reserve, I suggested for, if something happens, that's capital improvements, or not capital improvement, capital.
Expenses.
Expenses, yeah. And then a hundred and one thousand from the parks, so any improvements that they might have. I just think we're cutting off our nose to spite our face.
This emergency fund, if I may ask, who, who would choose the emergency, or how does that work?
Commissioners' court would decide what the, if, if it was to be spent in case of emergency, such as courthouse burning down, or annex burning down, or tornado, or something along, it's gonna have to be catastrophic for that spend.
Do we have a contingency plan? We do not have an emergency plan.
No.
Okay.
At last Commissioners' meeting, or two, two meetings ago, I believe, there were several personnel requests, additional personnel requests, all of which with benefits packages seem to be somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. Would a, is there a, is there a balance? This is a question to help you guys move off, move off the start. And that is, is there a balance between the hiring freeze and attrition that could get you to anywhere near a million dollars through retirements that are upcoming, or any of those, any of those type scenarios?
You're talking at least ten people attrition?
Beyond hiring freeze?
Am I too close with your stuff?
It depends on what number you're trying to make up. If you're trying to make up from the seven hundred number, then it's only two or three. If you're having to make up from the hundred thou, or a million number, then yes, it's ten-ish. So it just depends on what number you're starting at.
And that attrition could be two in one of their department, and then they don't get to hire, they, they're down however many people.
A citizen at last meeting brought up an interesting thought of analyzing department by department of, is there a certain department that potentially is overstaffed at the moment where there could be personnel transfers versus, versus simply adding people? And I don't know if that's ever been looked at or done, but it was brought up by a citizen.
It's something that can be done, but not in the time thing, timeframe we have right now. We're, that's gonna take a year process at least. Yes, sir.
And references this emergency fund. You're talking about the courthouse burned down, which, that'd be tragic, no doubt about it. Talking about the air conditions going down. I'm just assuming we have insurance, correct?
We do, yes, but you have to operate in the time before insurance kicks in.
I understand.
And you have a deductible on that as well.
Okay, what is the deductible?
I couldn't tell you what that is. That's not something that I know right off the top of my head.
But it is adequate insurance, correct?
I'm sorry?
It is adequate insurance?
Yes, sir.
So.
The problem being, in order to offer the services that are being offered in the courthouse at this time, that none, nobody's going to disagree needs to be here, is gonna have to be located somewhere else, and you're gonna have to lease rent buildings.
buildings in order for that to happen. And then maybe those locations don't fit what that office needs. And so then you gotta refurbish or re, or change the cost of doing that.
That's what I was talking about with the contingency fund.
Yeah.
I mean, because you have, I mean, contingency plan, because I understand you have to relocate and there's a lot of logistics involved in that, no doubt about it. And, because it would shut the county down for probably a week, thirty days.
I don't.
Just, just to get up and going someplace else.
I think you're talking about more like four or five months.
I'm talking about bare minimum.
Yeah. How many four, nine months at bare minimum? And so, yeah, no registration, no courts, no. Alright, so we're gonna go back in to just discussion with public officials court. So Sean suggests cutting a hundred and one thousand from the parks, cutting the emergency reserves and the seven hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Dan, valuation goes up on even those that are frozen, right? But the tax rate doesn't, is that, which way does that work?
Well, the amount of tax that they pay does not. If they have a home, a over sixty-five cap.
Okay. And so.
If they're at their cap, then their cap stays at that until that home is sold or.
So you're talking about appraisal value?
Appraised value. Appraised value may go up.
Yeah.
And it can go up on a homestead or with an over sixty-five or disability. But if it's at their cap, according to what year they turn sixty-five and, I mean, there's a lot of things that go into it. But their cap does not change. I mean, if they're capped out at three, five, six hundred dollars, thousand, whatever it is, then that's their cap. If every, it, it doesn't matter what changes. They're capped at that amount. So it's not gonna affect anybody that has a homestead and an over sixty-five with a cap.
Other properties that they own would.
Other properties that you own, yes. But I mean, if you own more than your home, then that's. A homestead exemption? No. I mean, that's optional. Given the homestead exemption on a property is optional.
Which Curry County does?
Which Curry County does. Three percent discount, two percent, one percent discount that you give, that's optional.
So what, we are worth forty?
Seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Seven forty-eight. Forty-five. Cutting seven hundred and forty-seven thousand? Well, because these numbers are happening. Of course, it falls between forty-five thirty-five and forty-five eighty-five.
So more or less forty-five five, give or take.
Yeah, roughly somewhere there. Well, I don't wanna get rid of the, the emergency fund for sure, so I can't find that, so. Make a motion, we have record vote on forty-eight. Is there a second? Oh, I'm favor forty-eight.
Okay, who was in favor? I have to. Jeff, did you go?
I'm in favor of forty-eight, raise your hand.
Please.
I'll post.
Thank you.
Alright. Scheduled public hearing, September sixth. Gives us that timeline that we need to, within twenty-five days and more than ten days from. Schedule a public hearing for September the sixth.
September what?
September sixth. Double verify that or be sure that it's, I am not mistaken. September sixth, day after Labor Day. Let's move, we have a second.
Good.
All in favor? I'll post. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate everyone who's having and expressing so much.